Yeah. Happy Woods today. Maybe come up with the trash.
He was just happy, he was just talking about it out. What is going on?
I guess he just wanted to look at his man. And talk, and talk like he's talking about his shit. Well, this is a good person. No, I'm thinking also having a long time to complain about it. I'm saying here, yeah. Have you called the trash company? So we can see your problem. And of course. That's a good kid. Like they did. I'm doing it. It's just like laying on the side. Messing up his grass. No, it's just in the driveway.
Yeah, yeah, we should finish the program last night, hopefully. Oh, we're done here? Oh, they got crap all over the work and shit.
Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Damn thing.
Pagano, Parson, Siam, Harris, Jones, Egan, Caputa, Shuldrough, Hinky.
Next item is approval of minutes. Are there any corrections, additions to the meetings minutes and executive meeting minutes of October fourteenth? Hearing on councilman Shuldrough moves to approve the minutes second by Ms. Pagano. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Eyes have it. Next item is a special presentation by the Disability Awareness Commission.
Good evening, fellow members of Florissant. My name is Brian Hallows, and please excuse me if I speak a little slower or a little different than I have the last couple of times I've spoke to you guys. I've kind of had a suffering of an injury that I will explain to you in just a moment. About three weeks, three years ago, a group of us, about fifteen or twenty of us, that are visually impaired and blind, decided we're going to find a place where we can get together and have lunch once a week or so and be around our people and be, um, have a good time. And we went to probably ten or twelve places, and then we caught on something, and we haven't left them since, and we won't leave them, and that's Mattingly's Restaurant. We met up with them. You know, when you get involved in stuff like this, a lot of it's about inclusion, and that's what it was big for me, anyway. Couple of years, it was wonderful. After that, just last March, I suffered a traumatic brain seizure, wound up being GBL stage four cancer that I'm living with now. But Mattingly's has kept me, they love to have me, and we love to have them. And this is our first award we presented from the Disability Awareness Council, and we wanted Mattingly's to be the first. So I hope Cheryl and Dawn will come up with us for a moment.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. I'm going to have someone read this to you, if they would.
I'm right here, Brian.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Jean No Camper of the Disability Awareness Commission. We have the plaque that reads Accessibility Award two thousand nineteen. The city of Florissant Disability Awareness Commission recognizes Mattingly's for its outstanding contribution to the awareness and the inclusion of people with disability.
Thank you, guys, so much. We appreciate you.
We want Cheryl to come and say a few words, you know. If anybody knows anything about Mattingly's, they are wonderful to our community, very charitable, and we appreciate everything that Mattingly's does for the entire community, and thank you so much for helping out our visually impaired. Cheryl?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We have wonderful customers and great employees, and I thank every one of you.
I will just add in that Mattingly's is in ward number three, and we've been going there, my family and I have, for years. Matter of fact, they know your name when you walk in the door. They already bring you your drinks and ask you if you want normal. It's just a great family place and very, I guess, very demonstrative of the kind of businesses we have in the city of Florissant.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you, Mr. Egan, mayor. Cheryl, great, great award, and being the first one from the Disability Awareness Commission, it's, you should be proud. I mean, you do, you do a great job at Mattingly's for everybody, and it shows right here with their award. So congratulations.
Next item is hearing from citizens. This is a time to speak to the council on any issue, not necessarily on your agenda, for three minutes. This is not a question and answer period. If you would like to speak to the council member or the mayor, please stay after the meeting is over, and we will get with you. If you're here to speak on a public hearing, wait till the public hearing is being presented. Richard Mayfield.
I pretty much had mine answered before the meeting by my councilman, but...
Sir, could you, your name?
Richard Mayfield.
For the record, please.
Richard Mayfield. But I talked to Tim Jones before the meeting, and he pretty much answered my questions, but we, we have several derelict cars sitting on the other side of the street, two of them in particular that have been in wrecks, and they have plastic blowing from the windows and so forth like that. I know that the plates are legal, so there's not much we can do about it, but if you're trying to rent out the house that is vacant behind there or something, it would be almost impossible. If the people could at least put them up in their driveway, that would be appreciated, you know, but to have them sitting out across from your house and looking at it every day. They put up cardboard and plastic, and it's all blown away, and the rain's just blowing in it, and the whole side's destructed, and the other one has a caved-in trunk and so forth like that. So I think the longer you allow your city to have this look of it, the more you're going to attract what it looks like, and I think if we try to, I know the, it's probably against the laws and everything else, as long as the car is legal to let it sit there, but it's just something else to look at, I'm telling you. I know with our homes, they'll come by and write you up if something doesn't look good, and you have to abide by what they say. It at least should be the same way with your cars you got sitting on the street. You wouldn't want it in front of your house, I assure you. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Edward Kaufman?
Yeah, my, my name is Ed Kaufman. I'm here tonight to see what I can do to help the city, uh, help me get something done with my property. I have been in Florissant for fifty-something years, involved in a little of everything, and I'm here tonight just to ask, what more can I do, or that? I have a fence in my, my yard, my backyard, on the right side, in the back of me. For the last, I'd say, four years, I've been trying to get it cleared. It's grown up, I mean, up, just up on both sides. The one fellow on the, on the right side of me, nice fellow, all this and that, he just don't like trimming his fence. The one in the back of me is a rented person who don't cut nothing, and I understand that. I'm sure Florissant's got a lot of that, or what have you. I'm just here tonight to find out how long it would take, and I, you probably don't have the answer tonight for me, but I've been going probably, almost it'll be after this year's over, close to four years trying to get this done. I, the first time it was done, they, it was taken down, the, some of the stuff, the growth or that. What I'm trying to do is approve my property to paint my fence. I got to have it all cleared, growth cleared off of the fence, down to the ground, in order to do that. And this last year now, they got a citation, and as I understand it, they were told, you know, to do it by a certain date, which didn't get done. The one fellow on the right of me did trim some stuff off of the fence, some loose stuff, but never trimmed it down to the ground. I don't know if my fence is ruined or not, or what it is, and if it is, I, I, or what it would have to do with, they'll be liable for that, or they won't. I'm not really concerned so much with that, it's just getting it done so I can paint my fence. And so I'm just asking here tonight if there's anything more than I can do, or what can we do? It's in progress now, I think, because I understand August the twenty-eighth or so, it was, uh, they had given till then to do that. The ones in the back have cleared nothing. I mean, it's, it's, it's trees and stuff that's grown through it up now, uh, since the last two years it was done before. It's never been, been cleared or this and that, and I'm just here to explain what's happened, uh, and to see what it is that can be done about it, you know, or whatever, because now I don't know where it's at, and I know these things take time to get done, but I don't know, I understand, August the twenty-eighth, it was supposed to have been done, and it wasn't. So where they go from here, where they go to court, or they get subpoenas, and what happens, and on and on and on, I just would like to know, because I plan on staying in Florissant, or I want to, but I want to improve my property to the point. It's the, it's the fellow behind me, the yard behind me, and the one on the side of me.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman.
And I, I, I just, just wanted to bring my case to you, or that along with everything. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Kaufman? Mayor Lauer? Could you please call my office tomorrow and give my secretary all the information, and we'll...
I sure will. Anyway, I, I'm just want to, there's other things I do want to do in Florissant, and again, not, I mean, I want to do personally, I think I talked, this is something about that.
Please contact my office, and we'll look into it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, did you want to say something?
Last gentleman, I've seen him out in the field, which I know him personally pretty good. Just to explain, I did send the code enforcement cop over there about a week and a half ago on that back street, and we looked at all of them. There was one guy with expired plates, but it does suck looking at all those crashed up cars like that, but I know legally, the city can't do nothing about them being smashed up or crashed unless they got bad plates on them, so we did send our code enforcement cop over to do his due diligence, and he did do what he was supposed to do.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next item is communications.
Email dated October thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, from Rob Hoffman regarding drinking establishment in the Old Town. Letter received October twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, from Bryce Clinton regarding speeding on Flamingo Drive.
Next item, public hearing. Public hearing number one-nine-one-zero-zero-two-nine.
In accordance with section four oh five, three tenths of the Florissant zoning code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, and the council change at nine fifty-five, through St. Francois, on Monday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, at seven thirty P M. on the following proposition. To authorize a special use permit to Bing Seafood Cafe, D B A Cajun Crab, to allow for a sit-down carryout restaurant for the property located at six thirty, North Highway sixty-seven. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling eight-three-nine-seven-six-three-zero, or T D D eight-three-nine-five-one-four-two.
Petitioner present. Yes, please come up to the podium. State your name, address for the record, please.
Gerard Mudd, seventeen fifty-seven High School Drive.
Explain to you what you, what you plan on doing with the restaurant, and hours of operations, what you...
To do a sit-down and carryout restaurant. Our operation is a Monday to, uh, Sunday to Thursday, from eleven to eight-thirty, nine. Friday and Saturday from eleven to ten.
Sir, can you talk into the microphone a little bit, please? Thank you.
Sorry about that. Business hour will be Sunday to Thursday, eleven to nine, Friday and Saturday, eleven to ten.
Sir, would you have, will you be having any alcohol served in?
Not right now, so may, if, if we have, we'll apply for later, just for beer and wine, just real basic one.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, do you guys own any other restaurants? There's a lot of crab places open up throughout St. Louis County. There's the Mad Crab, the Ugly Crab.
It's all kinds of crab.
There is. Do you guys have any other restaurants?
We had different type of restaurant. That's the first time we went to this type of restaurant, yeah.
Okay, what, what about, uh, can we make sure that there's a trash can in the entrance of your place, and hopefully one on the outside, you guys, so anybody coming and going, the trash is getting put in the proper places?
Okay.
I know the people that was in there before you guys always had a problem with stacking boxes out back, and then boxes would blow all over the back parking lot.
Okay, we definitely...
Backs up to a creek back there, which there's a fence, and then those boxes would hang on those fences, and it looked very trash, and every time that we would drive by there, the boxes would be snugged up against that fence, so if you guys could make sure that that doesn't happen.
Yeah, we definitely make sure, take care of that.
Welcome to Florissant, you guys. I hope you do a great business, and I'm sure you'll see some of these council people coming up to your business, including myself.
Okay, appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Egan?
Uh, my question's been answered, but welcome to Florissant.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Mr. Hinky?
Yeah, I don't get to say this very often, I spoke to Gerard. Very celebrated. Uh, about this restaurant, Cajun Crab, and it sounds really good. We went over a few things, especially the trash can out in front for Timmy, but, uh, sounds good. Good use of the space, and welcome to Florissant, hope you do wonderful there. You'll see me there.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hinky. Mr. Parson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, you two. I, I just have a question.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, you two. I, I just have a, a question. Do you guys plan on offering any discounts for our, our veterans or senior citizens that come in and eat at your establishment?
Yes, definitely, yes.
Okay, all right, outstanding. That's all I needed to know, and, uh, congratulations on being here in Florissant.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Um, what, what's your, um, I know it's Cajun, but are you going to have any other kind of-
What's your menu?
On the menu, different seasonings, different ways of eating crab?
Yeah, like kind of-
Or is it all going to be Cajun food?
Cajun, and some maybe just garlic, maybe some just plain. People don't like Cajun, we don't put Cajun only, so just like-
Lot of garlic?
Garlic, and less garlic, maybe.
Lot of garlic.
Okay.
Okay. Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment or speak on this matter? Seeing none. Councilman Hinky moves to close this public hearing, second by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all oppose. Eyes have it. Public hearing is closed. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Next item is bills for a second reading. Bill number nine-five-three-seven.
Three-nine.
Mm-hmm. Three-nine. Wait a minute.
Did I do this?
Three-nine. Councilman Sholdroff moves for a second reading, second by myself. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all oppose. Eyes have it.
Orders to authorize a special use permit to Girls Get a Grip Gun Club LLC to allow for the educational and educational development center for the property located at forty-five St. Anthony Lane.
Councilman Sholdroff moves for a third reading, second by Mr. Hinky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all oppose. Eyes have it.
Orders to authorize a special use permit to Girls Get a Grip, Get a Grip Gun, I can't say that. It's just, it's just too hard to say. Girls Get a Grip Gun Club LLC to allow for an educational development center for the property located at forty-five St. Anthony Lane.
Before the final vote is taken, is anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdroth?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Bill number nine-five-three-nine passes and becomes ordinance eight-five-six-two. Bill number nine-five-four-zero. Councilman Sayam moves for a second reading, second by Mr. Egan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all oppose. Eyes have it.
Orders to authorize a special use permit to PFMW Florissant LLC, DBA Planet Fitness, to allow for a fitness club located at one seventy-five Flower Valley Shopping Center.
Councilman Sayam moves for a third reading, second by Ms. Pagano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all oppose. Eyes have it.
Orders to authorize a special use permit to PFMW Florissant LLC, DBA Planet Fitness, to allow for a fitness club located at one seventy-five Flower Valley Shopping Center.
Before the final vote is taken, is anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdroth?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Bill number nine-five-four-zero passes and becomes ordinance eight-five-six-three. Bill number nine-five-four-one. Mr. Parsons moves for a third reading, second by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all oppose. Eyes have it.
Yes, you have a question.
Ms. Pagano?
And I'm going to refer to, um, Mr. Hassel. It says the repainting of masonry, but they are going to be staining. Can the wording be different, or should, should it? I mean, because it is a difference, and that's what I don't want to-
If you want to clarify it, to convert it to, change the words to staining rather than painting, probably a good idea.
Than painting, yes. Because I know that happened with Jimmy John's, there was that big-
Right.
So, I'm, I'm thinking that I would prefer staining.
Make an amendment?
Can I amend that? I'll make a motion to amend.
I'll second that.
There's a motion on the floor to amend the bill. Says ordinance to authorize a repainting and, and switch that to-
Staining.
Staining of the masonry. Second by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all oppose. Eyes have it.
Okay. So, motion on the floor, ready for roll call?
Before the final vote is taken, is anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Orders to authorize a repainting of masonry for thirty-two thirty Parker Road.
Staining.
Staining.
That's what I was going to say, in the title, the word, yeah, the ordinance to authorize the staining of masonry for thirty-two thirty Parker Road. First whereas clause, you wouldn't change that, but you would change the second whereas clause, where it now reads, whereas idea architects is proposing to repaint. Change that to stain brick, and then obviously in section one, be the same thing. It currently reads, idea architects is hereby authorized to repaint, should be to stain the brick on the building.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, this is for the administration, I guess. Mayor, can you make sure somebody follows through on this, to make sure it ain't painting, so we don't have to go back and tell him, that's no good, which we've went through this before, uh, make sure it's to stain, not to paint. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Clerk, please poll the council.
Pagano? Parsons?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdroth?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Bill number nine-five-four-one passes and becomes ordinance eight-five-six-four. Substitute bill number nine-five-four-seven. I'll move to accept the substitute bill, number nine-four-five-seven, second by Mr. Sholdroff. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all oppose. Eyes have it. I'll move for a second reading, second by Ms. Pagano. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all oppose. Eyes have it.
Orders to amend Title II, Chapter two-four-five Parks and Recreation of the Florissant City Code, Section two-four-five-one-eight-zero, fees for use, to adjust fees for use for various park facilities.
Mr. Hinky moves for a third reading, second by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all oppose. Eyes have it.
Orders to amend Title II, Chapter two-four-five Parks and Recreation of the Florissant City Code, Section two-four-five-one-eight-zero, fees for use, to adjust fees for use for various park facilities.
Before the final vote is taken, is anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris? Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdroth?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Substitute bill nine-five-four-seven passes and becomes ordinance eight-five-six-five. Next item is new business board appointments. Mr. Hinky?
Yes, I would like to, uh, reappoint Matt Hartman to the Board of Adjustment.
Second by Mr. Hinky, or, I'm sorry, second by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose. Eyes have it, appointment is made.
And I also would like to reappoint Joseph Kane to the Personnel Committee.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all oppose. Eyes have it. Mayor?
I wish to appoint Simone Reenie, seven-seven Lexington Park, to the Environmental Quality Commission.
Second by Mr. Sholdroff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all oppose. Eyes have it.
I'd also like to appoint, uh, Simone Reenie, as an adult, to the Youth Advisory Commission.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all oppose. Eyes have it. Appointments are made. Next item is request. Councilwoman Pagano moves to accept the application for a transfer of special use permit number six-four-three-one from Twinkle Enterprise LLC Incorporated, doing business as Subway Sandwich Shop to Dan- ESU LLC, doing business, DBA for Subway at the operation of a restaurant at sixty-two Grandview Plaza Shopping Center. Second by myself. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all oppose. Eyes have it. Motion carried. Application is accepted. Councilman Sayam moves to appro, approve a full package liquor license for Mayu Maya LLC, doing business as Mini Market Four, located at seventeen sixty-three North New Florissa Road. Second by Ms. Pagano. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
No.
Caputa?
No.
Sholdroth?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Motion carried, liquor license is approved. Next item, bills for a first reading. Bill number nine-five-four-nine.
Orders to authorize a special use permit to Bing's Seafood Cafe, DBA Cajun Crab, to allow for a sit-down carry-out restaurant for the property located at six thirty, North Highway sixty-seven.
Bill number nine-five-five-zero.
Orders to authorize a transfer of special use permit to six-four-three-one, number six-four-three-one, from Twinkle Enterprises Incorporated, DBA Subway Sandwich Shop, to Dan ESU LLC, DBA Subway, for the operation of a restaurant at sixty-two Grandview Plaza Shopping Center.
Bill number nine-five-five-one.
Orders approving the Community Development Block Grant, fiscal year twenty-twenty Annual Action Plan for the City of Florissant, Missouri, and authorizing and directing the mayor to submit such plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Bill number nine-five-five-two.
Orders appropriating the Community Development Block Grant funds for two thousand nineteen fiscal year for the City of Florissant.
Bill number nine-five-five-three.
Orders to authorize a transfer of ten thousand dollars from Capital Improvement Fund, account number zero-three-five-zero-three-three-three-zero-zero-zero, capital additions, materials to account number zero-three-five-zero-three-three-zero-zero-one-zero, equipment repairs. Vehicles for the-
I didn't mean hit that, I was going to sneeze.
Public Works Department Vehicle Repairs.
Move for a second.
Mr. Sholdroff moves for a second reading, second by myself. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all oppose. Eyes have it.
Orders to authorize a transfer of ten thousand dollars from Capital Improvement Fund, account number zero-three-five-zero-three-three-three-zero-zero-zero, capital additions, materials to account number zero-three-five-zero-three-three-zero-zero-one-zero, equipment repairs, vehicles for the Public Works Department Vehicle Repairs.
I'll move for a third reading, second by Mr. Hinky. Roll call, please.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdroth?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Orders to authorize a transfer of ten thousand dollars from account number, from Capital Improvement Fund, account number zero-three-five-zero-three-three-three-zero-zero-zero, capital additions, materials to account number zero-three-five-zero-three-three-zero-zero-one-zero, equipment repairs, vehicles for the Public Works Department Vehicle Repairs.
Before the final vote is taken, is anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdroth?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Bill number nine-five-five-three passes and becomes ordinance eight-five-six-six. Next item is council announcements. Mr. Parsons?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just want to tell everyone that, uh, Ward's number eight and one, uh, Ward number nine, I'll get it out here eventually, is having a joint ward meeting on November the thirteenth, which is a Wednesday, begins at seven PM. Uh, it's going to take place at the James J. Egan Center Theater. Uh, we're going to be, um, having members of the administration there, uh, to present some updates in regards to the city. There will be a question and answer session for the administration and for your council members, so we would like anyone who's interested in attending to, to come there and, uh, and view our lovely theater. Uh, additionally, just want to remind everyone about, uh, being a good neighbor, thinking about your Florissant Five, uh, make sure you're keeping in touch with your, your people that live on your street. Also, uh, want to make sure that you're patronizing our local businesses here in Florissant. If you take an opportunity to visit at least five of them within a, a calendar month, uh, to the restaurants and other establishes, establishments here, it, um, takes care of the, the people who own these businesses and also promotes, uh, the area. So, um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Pagano?
Yes, for the residents of Ward five and seven, please be on the lookout for your yellow postcard. Uh, Mr. Sholdroth and I will be having our ward meeting on November fourteenth, Thursday, up at the Justice Center, so we hope that you will all be able to attend. Thank you.
Mr. Sholdroth?
Thank you, Mr. President. On October twenty-second, um, I had the pleasure and good opportunity, along with the mayor and Ms. Pagano and others, Mr. Jones, to attend the ribbon cutting for the Sightman Cancer Center on Graham Road. It's a great addition, not only to our city, but to our region and to our area, and they will open on November fourth. Um, I also had the good opportunity with Mr. Caputa and Mr. Jones to attend a census, uh, meeting for the upcoming census, with Congressman Clay hosted at our Civic Center on Friday. This is a very important, uh, operation. Um, unfortunately, North County was miscounted in the last census, and we need to improve on that. I'm sure in the coming weeks, we will be hearing more about this. Uh, the ad campaign will start in January, and in early March, you'll be receiving the applications in the mail. Please, please, please fill out the census farm and return them. I'm sure the mayor's going to talk about this as it gets closer and closer. It's very important, it affects all of our funding and our infrastructure. Um, I think they gave the figure out that, uh, for every missed person, uh, on the census, it's thirteen hundred dollars a year, times ten, which would be, you know, do the math, so we need to, please, please, have everybody fill out the census farms and return them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sholdroth. Mr. Egan?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's going to get cool this week. If you plan on starting your car and leaving it unattended, make sure you have Uber or backup ride to work. Or just simply don't do it. And, number two, uh, Friday, had the pleasure of, uh, shout out to St. Ferdinand School. They had a blue mask, uh, for first responders, and the CFLars had a large contingent of police officers that showed up, and it was good to see them interact with the school kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback on what Keith said when we, uh, me, Jeff, and Keith went to the census meeting. Uh, there's only ten simple questions. Uh, I think the one everybody's going to have problems with is giving their phone number out, but, uh, this is very serious, and it needs to be done, and you guys will start hearing more about it. Another thing I'd like to speak about, uh, I went to the Boo Bash. Uh, I was just amazed, there was a, close to twenty-five-hundred people went through there. Uh, that's the most kids I've ever seen packed in there so far. The basement was packed, the upstairs was packed, uh, I just thought it was fantastic what, uh, the parks people did over there, so, a big shout out to them. Uh, a couple weeks before that, I went up to the Nerf War at the JFK with the kids. Uh, that was packed for the number that they requested to have. Uh, that was fantastic for those kids, too. I'd like to give a shout out to our food pantry team. Uh, there's always somebody hungry, morning, noon, or night. Uh, it's a staple in our community. Uh, please keep them in line for volunteer work, money, extra canned goods. Like I said, you guys, that, that is a, a, a very important thing in our community. Another thing I'd like to say is, uh, I'd give a big shout out to our police department. Uh, Saturday night, I went out to the census meeting, and when I came home after about an hour, uh, there were some people breaking into my car. And I called the police department, and they came out in a quick hurry, uh, did a very professional job, they caught the guys, and then the command staff come over and let me know, to me, we got them. Uh, they did very, very professional job, and I was just glad that, uh, I know sometimes it's hard to keep up with these kids, but, uh, uh, our police department got them, and, uh, knock on wood for our young police officer that came over there, because he did a heck of a job. because he did a heck of a job diving over the fences and through the creek he went, and through the neighborhood's woods, you know? So he did a fantastic job, and a big shout out to the police, so thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had, over on Shackelford in Ward one, we had a litter pickup day on October nineteenth on a Saturday, and it was beautiful weather, and couldn't have been happier with the group of people that came out. It was a fun time. We had some Old Town Donuts. And then the really cool thing about this was that a number of students from Hazelwood Northwest Middle and their principal and a teacher came to participate in this. It was a nice group, and they were excited to put something even larger together in the spring. So I'm excited about partnering with Hazelwood Northwest Middle, the middle school there, and those kids also were able to document their service hours, so they're starting young in volunteerism. And, so looking forward to that. And then also, the same day, we had the Race to the Shrine, and that was beautiful, and lots of volunteers there. And the mayor and Chief Fagan, I think, kicked off the race. And it was just always a great time in supporting local organizations, the shrine itself, and then I think Sacred Heart Youth Group, and Power North County, there may be another one there that gets some funding for that. So it's for a great cause, but it's also a lot of fun. So just encourage people to keep being involved, keep getting out there, and volunteering, going to these events, and really just enjoying the community, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Yes, the work on Malamphy is still going on in Lindsay Lane. Make sure you use cautious, use caution when you're driving through there with the construction work going on. I know on Patterson Road in Humes, the gas company's been doing some work there on a continuous basis. It looks like they have had the hole filled up, and it is patched. It's a temporary patch, because they have to let the ground settle before they can fix it and pour the concrete back into, back into it. So just use some caution when you're driving around there with the, and all the construction that's going on. If you're a firearm owner, do not leave it in your car unsecured. Make sure you lock your firearms up. Be a responsible firearm owner. If you can't be a responsible one, you shouldn't own one. Neighborhood Watch, make sure you join your Neighborhood Watch programs. They're very good programs that we have in the city. November ninth, Ward Four Neighborhood Watch is gonna be doing a cleanup on Humes and Patterson Road. We'd be doing that at ten o'clock, and we will meet at Walker School, ten o'clock on Saturday, November ninth. Thank you. Mayor?
Yes, a couple of things. Five on your side, Morning Show. Today in St. Louis, we'll be doing positive stories about the City of Florissant on Thursday, October thirty-first. And then the Morning Anchors are gonna meet on Friday morning, the first, at the City Diner, located at ten sixty St. Francis Street, to do a meet and greet and hear from our residents about all the positive things that are going on in our town. So please, if you got time, please stop by. On Halloween night, October thirty-first, we're gonna be hosting a Halloween, who, Halloween Swim and Skate from six to eight at the Egan Center. And on Friday, November the eighth, we're gonna have a superhero date night, which is, this is gonna be at the JFK Center, so please join us. Fifteen dollars per person to attend that event. And then on Sunday, November the tenth, we're gonna have a Veterans Day Parade here on St. Francis Street. It kicks off at one o'clock from Banger Park, ends at the VFW Post. And then this year, the Veteran of the Year, the twenty nineteen Veteran of the Year is Louis G. Bowman the second. So please attend. It's always a great event. Tony Colombo from News Radio ninety-seven point one is the MC, and they bring a lot of their personalities out also, so it's always a nice event, so please attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next regular meeting of the Florissant City Council will be on Monday, November eleventh, Veterans Day, twenty nineteen. Mr. Shuldoff moves to adjourn the regular meeting, second by myself. All in favor? Aye. All oppose? Eyes have it. Meeting is adjourned.